Good evening, everybody. I'd like to start the meeting. Jennifer's here, so it's good timing. And this is a work session, and the date is February 7th, 2017. So with that very brief introduction, I'll turn it over to our superintendent, Denise Pontrelli, and she's going to give us a little background before we introduce John.
Great, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here on a cold snowy evening. This evening, we -- the topic for our work session is to have a conversation about a concept for Withrow Elementary. In December of 2018, John Belial and I had a conversation about exploring a discussion about the use of Withrow. And at that time, I'd shared with him that the board hadn't really had any discussions about Withrow yet. We'd been focusing on helping work through the sale of Marine Elementary to Marine City Council. And so we decided to meet and meet with the commissioners and John Belial and some of our school board representatives to learn more about a concept that John had been working on in St. Cloud. And so we asked him to share just a little bit about this concept because I know people are interested in it. And I think there's probably lots of things that could happen with Withrow. We all know that. But he'll share a little bit about the concept, and then we'll invite the commissioners if they'd like to come forward and have some discussion and just have a question and answer kind of session. But I do want to state that I've gotten some emails this week about wanting to know really specific things about all kinds, you know, aspects of the project. This is really just in concept. The board needs to decide whether they'd want to sell Marine or Withrow or not. There are choices for the board to reopen Withrow, to sell Withrow, to lease Withrow, to partner with something similar like this. So those are the choices, and we'll be waiting for direction from the board. So with that, I'll turn it over to John Belial. We have John skyping in with us this evening because he's a few miles away in a warmer climate. A few. Hi, John.
Hi. Mr. Chair, Board members, thank you for taking the time. And Denise, I wonder if it makes sense for -- is Fran there, right?
Yes.
Yes.
I wonder if he should just start out on kind of how we got to where we're at, or do you want me to do that?
Fran and Gary, if you would like to both come forward and have a seat with us, you're welcome to.
This is...
The mic over there might be -- John, would this be better?
And John, what we'll do is, so the board gets some idea of the concept because many of them have heard very, very little about it, is we'll let you and the commissioners talk, and then after that, we'll -- I'm sure the board members will have lots of questions they want to ask as well. Okay?
Yes, for sure. I just thought it made sense for Fran to kind of do the introduction on how we kind of got to this idea and a little bit about our previous meeting, and then I'll dovetail in when he and Gary are done and go into my part of it.
And if each one of you would introduce yourself, that would help. Most of the audience knows you, but it's just...
Good evening, Board Chair, Board members. My name is Commissioner Fran Miron. I represent District One on the County Board, which is the area that Withrow Elementary School is in.
My name is Gary Creasel, Washington County Commissioner. I represent District Three, which is pretty much the school district, 834.
And Mr. Chair and school board members, Withrow Elementary School is within the district that I represent, as I indicated. John and I both serve on the Community Development Authority, Washington County Community Development Authority, which really addresses housing needs within the county, among other things, economic development and other issues that we deal with. John actually represents District One on the Community Development Authority Board, so he lives in Hugo. And he broached the concept of a veteran, veteran family facility within the school. And I told him that I felt that it seemed to be a good use of a facility that was sitting empty, and if it were going to continue to sit empty, you know, certainly this is a concept that could be broached and at least discussed. And so we scheduled that meeting, as Superintendent Pontrelli indicated, just had some basic discussion about this as a possibility. But I think we realized at that point that the district had not made a decision yet as to what they were going to do with that school. I knew there was a history of some divestment in properties because of the Marine on St. Croix School. And so I'm pleased that the school board is actually having a work session to talk about, you know, what your plans are in the future with the school. And with that, John, I don't know if there's any more background that you'd like me to provide.
No, I think that pretty much covers it. And as most of you know, we met Mike and Liz, and Jennifer met to discuss this. And as I told them in that meeting, I didn't realize that it wasn't completely resolved. I thought they were moving toward disposing of the school, so that's why I brought this idea forward. I would not have brought it forward if I didn't think it was resolved. And Liz indicated in the meeting that she was interested in reopening the school. Mike said that was a possibility. And so, to be honest with you, this conversation does seem a little premature from my standpoint. You know, I thought I was going to be talking about potentially buying this property. It actually wouldn't be me. It'd be a nonprofit that would own and operate this particular deal. But again, I'm happy to talk conceptually about what it was. We've done one other similar type project up in St. Cloud, and that's on the VA campus up there. It's called Linden Grove. It's 37 units, and that's primarily geared toward homeless vets and vets that are at risk of homelessness. For this particular site, I don't see that being exactly the same kind of product. Again, this is very early stages, so you can't hold me to anything. I would envision the bulk of the units at Withrow, if you guys decide to sell it and we can agree on a price and all that, would be something where maybe 30 units total and maybe 25 of those would be just general independent living for veterans. There's an affordable component. Their incomes would have to be basically under $50,000 a year to live there. And then maybe five of the units would be geared toward vets that are at risk of homelessness. So again, that's very broad, general, conceptually what it was. I understand you guys have a difficult job. I'm a former Mauna Kea High School Board member, and so I understand the difficulties with budgets, and everybody's got a different idea, and it's difficult. So if you guys do decide to sell it, I'd love to have a conversation, and we could get into more details than that. If you guys plan on reopening it, you know, I don't want to waste your time or my time. We've got other projects that are going, and if you guys are going to reopen the school, you know, good luck. I don't want to get bogged down in all these details about what project might be, given that it's so remote that it would even happen. But I'm happy to answer some questions. If anybody has like a specific question, what they think it would be or what their concern would be, I don't, you know, again, if you guys are planning on selling it, that's great, but if you're planning on reopening it, this conversation doesn't seem like it makes a lot of sense from my standpoint.
Thank you. Fran or Gary, anything you want to add?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good afternoon, John. With me, as one of the founding members of the Yellow Ribbon Network of Washington County, we understand the need to support our veterans. That's why I'm here, not to interfere with your deliberation and what you have to do as a -- your governance, but just to speak on behalf of veterans. In the audience with me is several of our Yellow Ribbon Network leadership, as well as just veterans. But I am a -- there's a lot of enthusiasm amongst veterans for this. I was talking with one of my friends, John, there. He spends time down at the Capitol, and he tells me what the senior military leadership down there, we're talking generals and that, affordable housing is a hot button issue. And if this would work, I know veterans would welcome this opportunity and would wholeheartedly support it. So, you know, I know you have difficult decisions to make going forward, and but I just think at the 30,000-foot level, this is very, very attractive.
Thank you. And I'd be remiss if I didn't thank you and your colleagues for your service.
Thank you.
So, thank you. Questions, comments?
I have a -- at the meeting, I had written down that I thought that the building would be considered a donation. Is that still what you're thinking, or how would that work?
Well, this is a nonprofit, so, you know, if you know about nonprofits, they want everything for free. So, you know, I understand your position, too. Like I said, I was on the school board. You know, we would want to get it as cheap as possible, and, you know, if you guys were so inclined to donate it to this particular cause because you felt it was good for the community, of course, that's what we would want, you know. But we also understand that that's maybe not doable from your standpoint, that you've got to have, you've got to get paid for it, something, because your stewards have the limited funds you have. And then we negotiate a price, and we go from there, you know. Once we got, again, if you guys decide to sell it, there's a price put on it, we negotiate a price, we go and line up the financing, which would primarily be through Minnesota Housing Finance Agency. They're the ones that fund these types of projects, and we just go from there.
Okay.
I guess I would just add one more thing to Fran and Gary's comments. One of the reasons we came up with this idea, actually, it wasn't my idea, it was a veteran's idea. Tom McKenna is his name, and he started the nonprofit every third Saturday. He's a veteran, and he was, he has PTSD, and he brought the idea to me about there's a demand for a rural setting for veterans that have PTSD, just because sirens and noises and stuff like that can be disruptive for them, you know, just make it maybe harder to sleep and that type of thing. And so he thought that there was a demand for that type of thing, given that he has it himself, and, you know, he's highly functioning, but he's still, you know, sirens, fireworks, those kind of things are very disruptive for those folks. And he thought, he liked the idea about them being out there, they could do the, you know, some of the maintenance, maybe take care of the lawns, that kind of thing. And so that's where the idea came from. I drive by that school because I lived in Hugo for the last 25 years, and I drive by that school three or four times a week. And so Fran and I were at a meeting, and it was mentioned to him, like, what do you do with an empty school? And we're like, there's just not much you can do with it, and that's why this idea came to be. And I'd like to say it was my idea, but it actually wasn't. I'm feeling it.
Thank you.
If I could, Mr. Chair, just like that, I don't know how the school government works, but county government, by law, we could not gift anything, any facility or equipment or anything. It would have to go through a formal bid process, just so there's no misunderstanding. I mean, I've seen some commentary about people were concerned about gifting, and I don't think that's, you know, good, unless I'm wrong. I'm not on the attorney.
No, I think that's a legitimate question. I think many people here know that when the armory, the new armory was being built, that same question had come up, and we have not gone to our attorneys and put that with them yet, so that would be further down the line. Other questions, board members, anything else that you'd like to know? Director Bellteer?
Yeah, thank you. First of all, thank you very much, John, for this opportunity, as well as the commissioners for attending. Along the budgetary commentary, maybe this is just a hope of mine, but, you know, do you foresee there being any ability to have future discussions on, you know, being creative with our funding sources? You know, I guess I was, I had the hope that, you know, let's cover, you know, let's take on this and, you know, take it to the next step. I see it as a multi-layered type of process. So, you know, do you see that as a possibility, that we can have some further discussions about finding some creative funding sources?
Absolutely. Again, I have no idea what the fiscal impact of whatever the school board chooses to do. I mean, I have no clue what it would cost to open up Lily Lake. Or Lily Lake. You didn't close that one, did you?
For my kids.
But anyway, I haven't got a clue, you know, and what the sit and idle cost is. But I think John's point is rather than be Don Quixote charging after a windmill, if there's no appetite for this and, you know...
From my perspective, and we talked a little bit about that earlier in our preliminary meeting, there are a myriad of issues. I think some of what I hear, and I'll just put those out, so you'll know some of the concerns. One is that I believe at the present time, the school is zoned as a school, or a church could go in that property. Something else what I believe, and you guys are more expert on that than I am.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, I did visit with city staff. John, I believe you have visited with city staff in Hugo as well, which is, the school is within the jurisdictions of the city of Hugo. And you're right, Mr. Chair, it is zoned agricultural, there's limited uses within that area. Schools and churches, obviously, are permitted within any zoning district within the city. So, you know, its use as a school is permitted without any conditions attached, and use as a church is permitted as well. Other uses, and particularly this use, would require some significant discussion with the city of Hugo. Multifamily housing is not allowed within the egg zone, so, and multifamily housing is not within the city of Hugo, comprehensive plan within this area. So this probably would require a comprehensive plan amendment and considerable discussion with the city of Hugo. But as John indicated, you know, none of those discussions probably are pertinent at this time until really the school board makes the decision as to what you plan to do with that. Now, obviously, there's issues. I received an email, even this type of housing within that area has issues, and obviously that's why we have codes and standards that are set by governing bodies. But on the other hand, a shuttered building that sits idle for a period of time presents its own problems as well, and I'm sure that that'll come into play with the city of Hugo if, in fact, the school remains closed, so. But really, you know, we respect the decision the school board has. This is not an easy decision to make, but certainly you're the best people to make that decision. And if, in fact, you decide to divest yourselves of the building, I'm sure Commissioner Creasel and I will do what we can to, you know, secure whatever funding may be out there from various sources. John mentioned one, to make the school as whole as possible on this particular property.
Related question before we leave that. And John, at any point, if I go on and you want to talk, let me know.
Yeah, I guess I just want to reiterate that I'm not sure, like I said, this seems all premature. If you guys want to sell the property, you put a price on it, and somebody buys it, and do you really care what happens to it after that? I mean, if you get your money out of the deal? But I think more importantly, you guys just have to decide, are you reopening it, or are you going to sell it?
Yeah. And that's not a real easy decision as well. But before we leave this question where we were talking about zoning, can you talk, I think it also would need to go through the Met Council?
Well, because it would require, Mr. Chair, school board members, because it would require a comprehensive plan amendment, likely require a comprehensive plan amendment, any comprehensive plan amendment would have to be approved by the Met Council.
And we do these on a regular basis with other projects. You know, comp plan change is not uncommon, and zoning changes are not uncommon. This is a unique situation, no question about it, but it's done. And one of the main things that the Met Council is trying to do is create more affordable housing, so they're very open to these type of comp plan changes versus if you wanted to put a dog track there or some commercial use, they probably would reject that type of thing. But given that one of their mandates is to increase the affordable housing stock in the Twin Cities, they pretty much will approve those as a general rule.
How about the amount of time involved, the timeline for it to go to zoning or the timeline that it would go through the metro? What I'm trying to get a little bit of a feel for as well is that even if this group, and I don't know, because we haven't polled them and said, hey, where are you at, nor do I plan to do that tonight, we will get a feel, but I'm saying, like you said, I think it's a little premature at this point. But any sort of timeline, how long it would take to go through a rezoning request, or how long it would take to go to the Met Council? Is that months, or...
Mr. Chair, that's a good question. And so what would typically happen, and we've done a lot of these projects, is we would get the place under contract, so we'd have a purchase agreement with the school district for X dollars, and then we would submit an application to Minnesota Housing Finance Agency. We put together the whole financing package request. Some of it's low-income housing tax credit, some of it's 0 percent loans. It's a package of things. So that application is due in June, and you find out in October if the project was approved or not, basically. And in the meantime, soon as the contract, it's hypothetically, you decide to sell, and we have a purchase agreement, then we would sit down with the city and start that process then, you know, and say, you know, contingent on everything happening, right? The city typically in those situations said, well, we'll do the zoning change, you know, assuming they agree, and the comp plan change. We'll do all those things if your, all your financing gets approved and it all happens. And again, so October would be when the final word would be found out.
And I think you said it, and I'm trying to be precise, all of that has to be predicated on a purchase offer or agreement?
Yeah. The Minnesota Housing Finance Agency, they won't basically review your application if you do not have the property under contract. Have access to.
Okay. It just, it's screen froze, so I was just wondering if you were finished.
I look better when it's frozen.
Especially in time, right? Jennifer?
So, you know, just a comment, and John, I'd like a little bit of clarification from you. In the meeting, I feel like you've mentioned a kind of a two-month window is what, is where you were at, where you hope we can make a decision on this, whether not, yes, we're going to, you know, just gauge, have us have these discussions and then move forward with those other pieces of the project, and you were hoping for eight weeks, having us kind of have our decision at that time. Is that accurate still?
Yes, Mr. Chair, Board members. Yeah, because we need lead time to go get in front of the city, right? We got, there's a process there that we have to get the appropriate comp plan change request in, and zoning change, all that has to happen. All that has to happen before the June Minnesota Housing Finance Agency deadline. So, you know, I throw the two-month thing because when you back it up, that's about how much time we need to get everything in place. There has to be a market study, there has to be all these things that have to be done, some architectural drawings, all that has to be submitted with the MHFA application in June. So you need a good three months, preferably four, to get all that stuff teed up.
I keep looking around if there's other questions. I have some. One of the things that is in, I think, our picture, one, like I mentioned, at this point, I don't have a feel. I have some speculation, but it's strictly that of where the board would be on this issue. But it's different when you actually ask board members and you say, okay, either up or down, is this a good idea? But even if we go that route, I think other than veteran or school, another issue that comes up here is, is it in the fiscal interest of this school district? And particularly, at some point, price may be very, very relevant. We have a project that we're looking at in the southern part of the district, and we have a certain amount of money, and so money is an issue, as it always is. And I don't think this decision will be purely a money issue. In other words, I think there are a lot of people here on this board who are going to be torn because they care very much about veterans, neighbors, sons, daughters, whatever. In my own case, I have a mother-in-law who lost her first husband in World War II, and that shaped her life and her daughter's lives. So that's very, very relevant. But even if we look at that, I think a factor that I'm getting at is we just sold a building or are very close to actually formalizing that for approximately $1 million, and many people are very acquainted with that, and that's in Marine. By the comparison of the two buildings, I think Withrow is a much larger facility, and it's in better shape than Marine. But the disadvantage to us in Withrow, if we were going to sell it and had to go for some other purpose, is the attractiveness for alternative use, and I don't know what that would be. We have not, at this point, to my knowledge, appraised the building. And Fran, that's something you've raised, and that's a very good question. What's it worth? And ultimately, I taught economics, you determine the final, what it's worth by what somebody's willing to offer you and what you're willing to take. That's price. And so that's a part of it. But I'm saying, that's another contention here, is that if we go that route of putting it up for sale, it's not an easy thing to be a public entity and say, I'm going to be very, very generous and give away other people's money. We're the stewards of that.
Chair, I agree 100 percent, and if I were in your place, what, and if you, again, assuming you decide to sell the property, you just put it up for sale, and the high bid gets it. Whether it's a veteran's home that everyone feels great about, or somebody wants to create a storage facility there, something I looked into as well, is, you know, I think from the school board standpoint, your stewardship requirements, you probably just have to accept the highest price, you know? Again, I don't know, check with your attorneys on that. You know, this veterans' housing is a very, you know, warm and fuzzy thing, and I feel strongly about it. My grandpa, my dad, my brother are all veterans, and so, and I'm involved with that in the nonprofit, so. But I also understand your side of it, because I've been there, and you've got limited funds, you're making cuts like every school board has to. So, you know, you put it out there, and if somebody shows up and wants to give you, you know, whatever you're asking, and it happens to be for whatever purpose, it's school or a church, then you've got to go with that. And if the numbers don't work for us, we just don't do it. The one caveat I would follow up with is when we, if we get it, it'll go back on the tax rolls. If it stays as a school or a church, it stays tax exempt. Again, that's not huge money, but it is, it is an issue. But at the end of the day, like I said, from my standpoint, you know, you have a difficult job, we all know that, but first part of the decision is, are we opening it? Are we selling it? If you're selling it, you put it on the market, and as you said earlier, we all know what the price is, what someone's willing to pay for it.
And what we're willing to accept.
Yeah. And you take the, you take the high price, and nobody can go back at you then and say, well, you know, you gave them a sweetheart deal or whatever. Well, put it on the market, let the market determine, you know. I suspect there probably won't be a ton of demand, given that location, as you said, and it is hard to repurpose those unless, you know, like you said, if it's going to be a school, that makes some sense. Not sure a church would, given that you don't have any large auditorium space there, but...
One other part that I think is a relevant piece of information, and it came up at our first meeting, and Kristin, I'm going to ask you to chime in if you would, is what is costing us right now for that relatively empty building to maintain it?
I'm sorry, was that a question for me?
No, that's Kristin.
Hi, John. Kristin Holhaisel, Director of Finance and Operations.
Thank you. Sorry.
No, that's okay. So for the audited 1718 school year, we are, and it depends on what percentage we take for a custodian slash grounds and benefits going up there, but we're somewhere between 70,000 and 75,000 is about what it took us to run that building shuttered last year. I would say, looking at the cost so far this year, we're probably in the same arena as far as what we can anticipate closing out the year as far as cost to keep that, what it costs regardless if the building, with the building closed.
Thank you. Jennifer?
You know, I, again, appreciate this conversation. I think I've been very vocal about my passion for veteran care, also as part of the Yellow Ribbon Network. Ribbon Network. I think we're at a situation where we need to just put it out there, make our decision, and move on. Are we going to sell this or not? I have no more interest in waiting, you know, we're paying 70, 75K a year in a situation where we have some severe budget issues. So I think we owe it to our, our community to make a decision. And stalling is, is, I think that's irresponsible. So I, I think we, I think we should, my hope is that we can continue these conversations and, and see where it goes. But we do need to start actually making some decisions.
What, so can, with that note, what would be the next step? I mean, are we going to have this as an action item on a regular board meeting at some point? Or what's the plan?
I'm open. I'm saying, at this point, I think the number-one issue that we all agree on is, we have to decide, one, do we want to sell it? Two, do we want to open it as a school someday, whether that's immediate or whether it's long-range? And that may be part of it, but I don't think necessarily it's a dichotomy. I think what you might have is a third choice in there to say, okay, we're going to sit on it for a year or so, or whatever. And, but I'm saying, for lack of emotion, and we won't do that at this meeting, but for lack of emotion, those are some of the discussions we have, and then that makes it more serious. Something else that came in our pre-meeting, when Liz and I and Jennifer met with you, is you talked about the possibility of financial part of it, and getting a third party involved who would help if, if it was put on the market. And without, you know, speculating too much, I don't want to raise people's expectations too high of how much money that might or might not generate. Do you care to comment on that at all, John?
Well, what we typically do, and like I said, we've done this a lot, that, you know, the reason I brought up the free thing earlier, it's, so like the veterans' home that we, the Lindon Grove Project we did up on the St. Croix, or that St. Cloud Veterans' campus, the VA gave us the land. Basically, it's a land lease. They didn't give us the land, they just said, go ahead and build that apartment here, this, these are the requirements, this is what we want, we want it to be focused on vets that are at risk of homelessness, and basically, free land for you to build on. And then we took that package to MHFA. They awarded some low-income housing tax credits, they gave some 0% loans. You know, we put in the request of everything we need to make it happen, and then they either approve it or they don't prove it, disapprove it. So in your situation, you know, let's just say it's, I don't know, I'm going to say it's $800,000, because I don't know, to be honest with you, you know, we'd have to look at that. And again, if another bid comes in for, you know, a school, and they want to pay 1.2 million, you, you know, you have to accept that over, you know, say, an $800,000 bid from us. But anyway, so we would take that piece of information, we'd have a purchase agreement that would go in with the application to Minnesota Housing Finance Agency. We would request a certain number of low-income housing tax credits, we'd request a certain amount, it's called SOFT money or gap financing, and they would hopefully approve the project. You know, it's a competitive process, and usually about 40 to 50% of the projects get approved, depending on the year. I can tell you that this topic is a high priority for Minnesota Housing Finance Agency, especially the homeless, if you're going to have, you know, some homeless or at-risk or homelessness units. So it's something they're very interested in, and we've had some preliminary discussions with them. And the Lindon Grove Project up in St. Cloud has gone really well, so of course, that reinforces their, their feelings about doing more projects like this. We also have reached out to, actually, a private donor has approached us with wanting to get involved, too. I can't really share more than that, he hasn't said how much money he would put, but supposedly, a significant amount, which would really help our application, too. So when you go into MHFA, they really like to see how much leverage you got, right? So if you, you got, you're bringing other dollars to the table, they like to see that, because it's less that they have to come up with, right, at Minnesota Housing Finance Agency.
Now, you referenced prior, in that prior situation where the land was donated, there was no building, it was just the land.
Correct. And just for clarification, the land wasn't donated, they gave like a 50-year land lease for a dollar a year. So, you know, there was no land cost to the project. The land technically still owns, the VA still owns that, and it's on the VA campus, it's their land, and that's one of the reasons they didn't want to give up ownership of it, because it's part of their campus.
Thank you.
But, you know, that's a potential situation, too, you know, you're like, well, again, this is being presumptuous that you decide to sell, but if you did, you know, and you didn't want, maybe you do want to lump some money, maybe not, you could do a land lease situation, too, like that. You could say, well, we want X dollars a year for the next 40 years from that building. That's another option, too. If that, the income stream would make more sense from you guys versus just the capital upfront. I would think you'd just want to sell it upfront, but I'm just saying that's an option if you ever got to that point.
Thank you. Fran, Gary, anything you want to add to what's been said?
Just, if I might, Mr. Chair, just a question for John. You talk about the funding cycle, June and October, that is an annual cycle?
Yes, sir, yeah. So June, I think it's like June 16th or something is the deadline, and then it takes them until October to tell you if you got the award or not. So in this situation, if, in almost all of our situations, we would have a signed purchase agreement with the school district, which would have a contingency that that funding comes through. So if the funding didn't come through, then, you know, we would walk away from the purchase agreement. Or we would agree to try it the next year, if you guys wanted to do that.
Gary?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, that was kind of my question, John, is, for lack of a better word, what is the shelf life of your proposal? If it, you know, could this be extended out a couple of years, if that worked for the school board? Or is this something that you'd be looking in the next year, so to speak?
Well, again, I mean, we can just, we can show up every year, right? I mean, there's only one year that we can put our application in, and, you know, if the school board says, this is just too quick to make this decision, then we push out another year, and maybe a year from now, we're having a more resolved conversation, again, assuming you guys decide to sell. It came up in our prior meeting, when do you need to know an answer? Well, I said two months, if we want to make application this year in June, that's kind of the timeline we need. You know, if, if the application is for 2020, then of course, we don't need that answer now, we need an answer a year from today, so.
So the trigger would be the school board making a decision whether they want to keep the school, sell the school or reopen it? I mean, that's, that's a big question. And from there, then you could see which direction this might take.
See, I think that's an excellent point, because, and again, you know that, because when prematurely, it was saying, okay, the next two months, you got to make a decision to meet that present June deadline, that makes sense. But I'm saying, the board, in their deliberation or in their thinking about the concept, may decide, we're not ready to sell a year from now, that may change. And they say, you know what, we're still seeing certain variables that are unchanged, and it's not likely that we're going to use it, et cetera. And perhaps that becomes more definitive. Again, even by going out on that, I don't want to presume what the board thinks at this point, but that's a nice alternative. John, one of the other things, when you started off, you talked about the units that would go in there, and most of those would be for single individuals, is that correct?
No, not necessarily. It would just be, but it'd be, basically, just be a regular apartment building that is income-restricted. So it'd be veterans and their families. The Lindon Grove Project, that's 37 units up there, we have 12 studios, we have 12 one-bedrooms and 13 two-bedrooms. So it's common for veterans, obviously, to have a wife, sometimes a kid, a child, you know, sometimes they just got back from a tour or two, and they're struggling a little bit, they need affordable housing until they get back on their feet. Sometimes their military skills don't transfer the best to civilian life, and so they can have a few setbacks. But, and sometimes, I guess we envision this as just being a general population place, other than maybe five units for at-risk homelessness folks at work. If they didn't get a place like that, they might have to be, you know, sleeping on somebody's couch. You know, it's interesting how the definition of homelessness, I always thought it was, well, they're sleeping under a bridge, but actually, you know, HUD has a different definition, and if you're couch hopping, that's considered homeless, and, you know, it's, it's not quite what we probably think about it in layman's terms, but, no, so it'd be a general population there. I would expect some families, some singles, like any other apartment. We have other, what we call workforce apartments, which are just income-restricted. Generally, family income has to be under $50,000, roughly speaking. And obviously, there's families with kids and singles and seniors, you know?
Well, one of the reasons I asked that is, I've, I've had several calls and several emails, and in fact, you may have gotten some of those, because I gave the two commissioners' names to share those concerns, because I'm not familiar with this, but at least one of those persons had previously worked part of her career in a facility such as you described. And she gave a list of about a dozen questions. And what I would rather they did is, if I redirect them with questions, that they share those with you, or with Gary, or with Fran, because you're much better placed, from that perspective, to answer them than I am.
Absolutely. And I had mentioned this earlier, I think after our previous meeting, and I followed up with an email with you and Liz and Jennifer about, you know, if you have any questions or people do, feel free to contact us. You know, this would not be supportive housing, you know, I don't know if you, how much you guys know about the nuances, you know, this isn't where, you know, it's like a treatment center or anything like that. It's just going to be a general population apartment building, which is income-restricted. You know, we have a, we have a building in White Bear Lake, a 60-unit workforce housing, affordable, it's moderate income. Again, people can only live there if their incomes are under $50,000. You've got 60 units there, I'd say 20% of them are seniors, you know, probably 65% of them are families, and, you know, it's, it's just a mix. But this particular project that we're talking about here, it would have a veteran preference. So the veterans are always going to go to the top of the list. If there's an opening, they're going to go to the top. Even if there's other people on a list, let's say it's full, and, and there's a list of 10 people on there, and if a veteran comes in today, he goes to the top, he or she goes to the top of the list for the next available unit.
Jennifer?
Yeah, can, I don't, and I don't, I don't really know who to ask this question to, maybe Superintendent Pontrelli, can you speak to, I guess I had the interpretation that Withrow was always, I, maybe not, maybe it wasn't up for sale, but it was, throughout this process, it's always been something that, things have come to you, and we can bring that up for consideration. I guess I wasn't sure that we were still voting on whether it was going to be a school or not, so that I'm, I was a little bit taken aback at first, that that's a question, which is, fine that it's a question. I mean, I'm, I'm not, I'm not judging that, but I guess I thought, can you speak to that a little bit? Is this that we haven't had any offers up to this point, or any other interest in Withrow? Or?
Well, we haven't been actively marketing it, but I'm going to let Director Hoheisel respond, because any interest would go to her office, so.
Okay. We, during the last two years, and I have discussed this with the prior board, obviously, not the sitting board, that we have had a party that was interested in the Withrow property. We've had one. And there, there had, there was back-and-forth contact, and I think, I don't know if now that, I haven't heard for a while from them, but there was one at one point in time that was interested, and was probably interested for six to eight months, maybe even a year, but that might be a little bit of a stretch.
Thank you.
I can respond, can I just respond to that question really quick? I think we had a, I don't know if it was a closed meeting, but I remember having a board meeting about a year ago, where we talked about Withrow, we were talking about both Marin and Withrow. And I thought we had decided at that time, as a board, you know, sort of not in a formal way, but in that closed session, that we would put Withrow on hold until we, do you remember that? Because I remember you being a part of that conversation. So at least it was, in my mind, kind of put on hold, that we wanted to wait and see. And I think, you know, we are about to embark on a long-term facility process. So in some ways, I, I kind of feel like, you know, whatever we decide to do with both Withrow and with Oak Park, you know, really needs to be a part of that conversation. And I think you said it earlier, John, that, you know, I think if we, what it seems like, we have to decide, are we going to keep the building and use it in some way for the district, or are we going to sell it? And if, we really do need to make that decision. And so to me, it makes sense for that to be a part of the long-term facilities conversation. I know that doesn't really help this current situation, if there's a time component here, but at least that's, that's my perspective on it.
Thank you. I'm going to go to Director Burns and you and Jennifer.
And Director Stivlin, I think that's kind of the point that I was going to make, if, if this is, we're already in, in February, and, you know, I think, I think we all would like to see a determinative action for what we're doing with, with our properties. And potentially, though, if, you know, as we say, what is our next step as a board? If, if all of our properties are included in the broad consideration, what are we going to do? And we have a timeline on what that decision process is going to be, it's not open-ended, we're not going to sit on it for two years or three years, but we're going to make a decision, what does the future of our facilities look like in our district? Then I think, when that process is complete, hopefully sooner than later, we should be able to come to a decision as to, are we, is it going to be used or not? And, and then we can go from there. But that, I, I would imagine that if, that would appease, I think, the community as a whole, that if we've gone through a process of coming to a determination of how that's going to be used, then it's not up in the air any longer, that we, we can make a decision.
I, I think, Jennifer, did you have a comment?
I, yeah, and I, I think, comments, and I appreciate you both speaking up on that. I just wanted to say, again, drive this, I think, you know, whether or not this progresses or not, John is now in the dark, by the way, I don't know if you wanted to light on.
I know, we can only see your shiny glasses in the dark.
Time must have gone down there.
I, all I see is a beach, I don't know.
Better when it's dark.
I, you know, I, I.
Hour later there.
That's right, that's right. I just, I just wanted to say that, you know, no matter what direction the board goes, I, I really look forward to making a decision. And I can, I'm not going to speak for Commissioner Kreisel and the gentleman in this room, but I know that this county cares very, very much about our military families, and this is something that is incredibly important to many people in this community. So I, I just want to make the point that, whatever happens in this space and time, we shouldn't let this go. We should, we should work together collaboratively to take care of our veterans. So, you know, we, we owe it to them, and we, we owe our taxpayers a decision, too, so.
Director Stivlin?
Yeah, so kind of along the same lines. I mean, you know, I think we are a nonprofit organization, we're publicly owned by our community. And I think that, when I think about this community and what we've been through with the whole process of closing these schools, it really is in the very recent past, and I think a lot of people are still, you know, upset about the decision to close that school. And I, I really don't know where the community is at, as far as being ready to see it become something else. I think, as part of our long-term facilities process, I think it would be really beneficial to hear from our community, because I agree with you, I think we do support our military, it is a big, important part of our community, but I think our schools are, too. And I think we need to allow the community to... we need to allow the community to weigh in on, on what this building should be, because there are partners in this, so.
Board members, anybody else?
And then I just, I had sent everybody the information, White Bear Lake recently had Teamworks do a study, a demographic study that showed Hugo's projected for tremendous growth. And I think we would be letting that go. And I, I don't want to, I personally don't want to see that happen. And I also sent, Washington County assesses, assesses the property at 4.6 million. I know that's not market value, but that's what the tax value is of the property.
Thank you. Anyone else? Fran, anything?
No, I respect whatever decision the school board makes and whatever process you take to get there.
Director Pearson?
Thank you. I just want to thank you both commissioners for being here. And to John, I, I know it might feel a little premature, but it's, it's a good conversation to get us going. And I think it's worthy. And I agree with Director Pelletier that we want to take care of our veterans. So I just, I appreciate the conversation, and wherever it goes, we'll figure it out. But thanks for being here.
Thank you. And, and just keep in mind, if it doesn't happen this year, we just revisit it. Once you guys get things resolved, we can revisit it. And like Mike was saying earlier, at some point, if you put it up for sale, and the market tells you what it's worth, right? You can have appraisals, you can do whatever you want, and that'll determine what the real value is, at the end of the day. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. We're very envious here, John. Thank you for your time. And commissioners, thank you. And members of the audience and the public, and stay tuned, and we'll, we'll deal with it soon.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Where is he, Jennifer?
Okay, what we're going to do is to adjourn approximately one half hour.
Thank you.
Our session is closed.